Look, you see? Can you see him?
Yeah, I, yeah.
All right, we're ready.
Okay. All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May we please have a moment of silence for all of our troops in the United States and abroad? Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, folks here, folks at home, on this Thursday, March 7th, 2024, the Warmminster Township Board of Supervisors. We had an executive session tonight to discuss land development and personnel.
Yes.
Anything else?
Uh, yes, I do have something real quick. We do have to entertain a motion to amend the agenda tonight. On the initial agenda that was published yesterday, we had the award for the curb ramp installation, but there was an oversight with regards to the road paving program. On the amended agenda you guys have in front of you, it would be item 4F. And you'll see it says amended and amended, added via amendment, March 27th. So we would need a motion to add item 4F to the agenda.
So moved.
Second? Want you to second?
Yep.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Continue with the announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Holbert. Okay. Announcements. Janice, do you have any announcements tonight?
I just want to wish everyone an early Happy St. Patrick's Day. I know everybody gets excited in February. It was nice, one of the houses around the corners decorated nice with green and nice lighting. But make sure you're safe and careful because it's a good drinking night for a lot of young people. So if you need a ride, give me a call, I'll come pick you up.
Thank you, Janice. Chuck?
Just reiterate what she said about have a happy, healthy St. Patty's Day. Be safe, use Uber, Lyft, call a friend, walk. Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. Shudy?
Good evening, everybody. I just want to again wish people a Happy St. Patty's Day. We're all Irish on March 17th. And I've wanted to mention that this is Women's History Month, so please look and honor and revere those women in history who have helped to make this country. Thank you.
Shudy, Ken?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to, I know we haven't been here since early February, and I just wanted to, we've had some storm events, some snows, some other types of things. And I just want to again thank Public Works for the great job that they do. People take it for granted, they take them for granted, and they're an easy target for people to attack. But those guys do a great job. They stress about getting the job done for us. And I just wanted to thank them again. Thank you.
Thanks, Ken. On that note, Public Works rules. All right, I have some announcements for Parks and Rec. I want to remind everyone that per member requests and availability, park board meetings are now the third Wednesday of odd-numbered months. This month's meeting will take place on Wednesday, March 20th, at the rec. We'll be sending minutes and agenda next week. In the meantime, because so close to next meeting, wanted to make sure everyone who can help out with the egg scramble, put it on your calendar, Thursday, March 28th. Event is at 4:30, but they need volunteers to set up. So please, if you're available, to contact Parks and Rec. Also, save the date for designer beg. Bingo, ladies. We always like to line up for that event. That's Friday, April 5th. We need like six-plus volunteers. And then the spring yard sale, Saturday, April 20th. Need volunteers for that. They'll be selling hot dogs, pretzels. For behalf of Friends of Parks and Rec, please let us know if you can participate. The rubber ducky rigata, Sunday, May 19th. That's a huge event at the park. By popular demand, ticket books are back this year. The sponsors should be locked in by the end of today, so we'll have tickets soon. And that's all I have for Parks and Rec tonight. Okay. Yes. At this time, we're going to ask our esteemed tax collector to come up here and give us some information.
Great. Thank you very much, Kathy.
Thank you, Bobby.
This is the bill that went out recently. There is, I would like the residents to look at it before they open it, because there's a big red arrow that says I moved. I'm at 1100 Veterans Way. So there's been a lot of confusion this week as to where I'm located. It's in the Park and Rec building. If you come in off of Bristol Road, there are four speed bumps. At the third stop sign, you make a left. If you come in off of Johnsville Boulevard, there are six speed bumps. Go over them slowly. When you get to the stop sign, make a left. I have put out signs out there. At Johnsville Boulevard, there are two signs telling you to turn. Going down Johnsville Boulevard, I had put a sign there, and somebody stole it. So I don't know why you need a sign that says Tax Office with an arrow, but if you could return it, I would appreciate it. At the stop sign, there's another sign that tells you to turn. When you turn, there's another sign that tells you to turn. If you come in off of Bristol Road, there's a sign there. And at the stop sign, there's a sign. So there's plenty of signs directing you. I'm sorry, I lost one already.
Thanks, Bobby. I was going to ask you how long you were leaving them up, but if people were stealing them, you know.
No, they're permanent signs.
Don't steal her signs!
I know. They're permanent signs. They cost me almost $600.
Aw.
So, um, yeah. Yeah, luckily, Speed Pro on Catherine Street, excellent. Turnaround time was wonderful, and they did a nice job. They really did. So I don't know why somebody would want to sign that says Tax Office, but if they could return it, I would appreciate it. I talked to the patch tonight because they put something out there and they had my address wrong, and they're going to correct it.
Do you know?
Also, if you have Police or Fire, Credit Union, or TruMark, you must send them my tax bill. Credit Unions do not ask for a copy of the bill from me. You must send them the bill. A lot of the large mortgage companies do ask for a copy. Credit Unions do not. So you must send it to them. Or else you're going to pay more money. So when you get the bill, send it to them. If you use Bill Pay to pay me, which is absolutely fine, make sure you go into Bill Pay and change my address, so it doesn't go to the old address. You think it's automatic, but you have to change the address. If you use Bill Pay, always pay at least 10 days before the due date. Bill Pay does not use the post office where they put a stamp on it, and the county doesn't have to accept it if it doesn't have a postmark on it. So if you use Bill Pay, please do it 10 days before. Oh. The bills are out. In four days, 498 people have paid.
Oh, wow.
I just gave John checks tonight of over $400,000.
That's awesome.
So, yeah, four days, almost 500 people.
That's great.
The lines have been fairly long.
Oh, good.
So.
I want to say thank you for always looking out for our residents and going out of your way, and tonight, giving all the pertinent information that they may need.
Yeah.
Thank you for that.
They do need it. So pay attention to the back of the bill. It lists the hours, like it always does. But the arrow is the most important thing that they realize. Luckily, it's been on Facebook. It's, and people ask why we didn't send a notice out to say that. Mailing these tax bills cost over $7,000. Seven thousand. So to send a notice out saying I moved, they're not going to read it anyway.
Right.
But I don't, nobody's going to pay $7,000.
I agree.
So hopefully, this gets to work.
So at least 500 of us knew that we were, right?
Right.
And some of them read. They said I shouldn't have put it in red. I put it in red so it'd bring your attention to it.
Right.
You can't read.
No. Never.
But I tried.
Yeah. Well, thank you, Bobby.
All right. Thank you very much, and thank you for letting me go in the announcements.
Yes. Anytime.
Thanks, Kathy.
You're welcome.
You're welcome.
Okay. Under Presentations, we're going to, we're going to discuss the proclamation for Nativity School Anniversary. May I have a motion? We don't need a motion for this? Okay, all right.
You should read it.
Oh, okay.
Does that have it?
No, I don't have it. Chuck's in charge of that.
I'm in charge of it?
I'll go get it.
We don't have to read it now, do we? Oh, okay, okay. I'm sorry.
Give us a minute.
All right. Yes. Sure, go ahead.
I wanted to give a shout out to Jessica and Kathy. They have welcomed me with open arms. They have been so nice to me. No yelling and screaming at me. They're friendly. It's a pleasure working with both of them. And as I said, they brought me in with open arms. What can they do? How they can help? Public Works is the same thing. They helped me put up my signs. So I just wanted to give a shout out to that department, to thank them very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
We appreciate that.
Yeah, we do appreciate it.
Thanks for the kind words.
Okay. Mr. Haybach is ready to read the proclamation for Nativity School Anniversary.
Whereas we, the Board of Supervisors of Warmminster Township, Bucks County, Pennsylvania, are pleased to recognize nativity of Our Lord's School for the celebration of 65 years providing Catholic education to residents of Warmminster Township and the surrounding communities. And whereas Nativity of Our Lord's School was founded in September of 1958 by the Sisters of St. Joseph, with a staff of five teachers, two sisters of St. Joseph, and three lay teachers under the guidance of then pastor Father John Healy. And whereas over the past 65 years has served thousands of children and families, many who still live, work, serve, and lead in Warmminster Township. And whereas today, the nativity of Our Lord's School has approximately 50 amazing individuals that make up the administration and faculty to serve 520 students. Now therefore, be it resolved, we, the Warmminster Township Board of Supervisors and the entire Warmminster community, recognize, honor, and thank Nativity of Our Lord's School for stewardship and dedication to the Warmminster community for the past 65 years.
Thanks, Chuck.
Thank you.
So will you and Joe Veltin deliver that, or will you deliver that?
Yes, I'll deliver.
Great.
Thank you.
Your word.
The reason we asked Chuck to do that is because he coached Hivetti Wrestling for many years.
I coached volleyball and soccer at Nativity CYO, and all four of my kids want the Nativity award.
I thought you taught wrestling, too?
They don't have wrestling. I taught wrestling at Wood.
Oh, at Wood, okay. He's multi-talented. Thank you so much, Chuck, for doing that. All right, now at this time, we're going to go over land use matters, application for final plan approval for 20 single-family attached townhouses at 1250 West Bristol Road in the R2 zoning district. Okay, I would like to defer to Scott and Craig.
Sure, I'll take the lead to start. Yeah, this is a project we've seen a few times here now. They're back for final land development approval. We saw it twice last year.
Was that last year?
Yeah, that was last year. Beginning of last year for preliminary land development approval. At this time, I'll turn it over to Kelly McGowan, the attorney for the developer.
Scott, thank you very much. Madam Chair, thank you for having us this evening. Board members Kelly McGowan, representing the applicant. As Scott just noted, this is a preliminarily approved plan that you saw in April of 2023. Since that time, final plans have been in process. The plans were resubmitted. Rob Cunningham is here from Holmes Cunningham. He prepared the plans that are the subject of the application. Those final plans were reviewed by your township engineer. We received a review letter in November. That is a will comply letter. We've worked through some comments with Craig. We went to your planning commission on November 28th. Planning commission unanimously recommended a final approval with conditions for this plan. We have received from Scott a proposed resolution. We've reviewed that. We had a couple of suggested, came in this afternoon. We had a couple of suggested changes that we're happy to discuss with the board at your discretion that we think are probably appropriate, given the extent of the improvements. But otherwise, the proposed resolution is acceptable to the applicant. Again, as Scott noted, and as Madam Chair, you stated in the beginning, this is 20 townhouse units located in the R2 residential zoning district at 1250 Bristol Road. I think all of the other matters were covered in prior meetings with this board. So I would ask if the board has any questions. Craig, Scott, I'm happy to go through a couple of those resolution comments with the board at your pleasure.
Yeah. Just, I think that's probably the next step is we can, a couple of comments I think everybody's aware of, and we can discuss those. And for anybody that wasn't at the prior meetings last year, this is part of a court-stipulated plan and agreement that was dated and approved by the court, the township, and the applicant back in 2010. So we started this in 2010. It's been a long journey. But the plans are ready to go. As far as the draft resolution for you to consider tonight, I think there's just a couple of comments the applicant would like to go over with you, and then I'll chime in as necessary.
Okay, great. So I can start with one comment with respect to Centennial School District and a bus shelter or a bus stop. And that would be serving this development. The comment is that due to the length of the driveway, there was a recommendation that a bus shelter be installed. We have requested that the condition state that in the event Centennial School District feels it necessary or desirable, that way we don't run into a circumstance where we go to the school district and have an issue and need to come back to this board for that reason. So we will go to the school district. We will discuss this with them. Rob has already identified a location on the plan that would be suitable, that again, we will also share with the school district, but that will cover that comment. Second comment was with respect to.
Todd, we'll go, sorry.
You want to do one?
Let's do one at a time. From an engineering standpoint, I'm fine with that change. It's a good point that the school district does not want one. We don't, we had it that it was required to be built, but it's a good suggestion to have it deferred to the school district. If they do require it, their engineer and my office will work out the design and location of that. So I'm okay with that change.
Thank you, Craig. Second comment we had is with respect to a proposed 15-foot-wide emergency access. I have two points here. The first of which is that the comment was somewhat internally inconsistent with respect to the proposed paving or other material. We are comfortable with Rob and Craig and the fire marshal determining the material width, design of that, and that's what's stated in the resolution of that proposed access. Because, again, we think there's probably a way to do it more environmentally sensitive. Rob has a few ideas about some ideas, you know, that would be pervious. And we would like to defer that, again, to Mr. Veltin and to Craig. Second comment we had, and we spoke about this, and I think we can resolve this, is that it was our thought not to construct that until, as you know, it will go to the authority's property line. And it's at that point that the, through the authority property, it would actually provide the egress or the ingress to the actual property. It was our thought not to construct it until such time as we can construct it through the authority, or it can be constructed through the authority's property, as not to take people with nowhere to go. In discussions, we did consider that one other way to resolve that, rather than waiting, is to put a bollards and a chain or a gate up also, in both, also at the development. And that way, you're not sending people, giving people a sense that there is an emergency access where actually it hasn't been completed. So those were our two comments with respect to that.
All right, I'll take each one. I'm okay with the modification that the material of the emergency access, there are, and I've done this many a times, grass paved or something more environmentally friendly. There's still a fire marshal, and that's up to Joe to make the final decision. But we could leave it as suitable, other material approved by the fire marshal and our office. So it makes it a little nicer where grass would grow up, but it's stable enough for emergency vehicles. Or if he still would like paved, that is fine as well, but we'll leave that option open. I'm okay with that. I also think it's a good recommendation, per our discussions earlier, that we have bollards or lockable gate as approved by the fire marshal as well at both ends, at the proposed street and also at the property line termination. That way, no one tries to get in there. So I agree with that. I believe that's, Scott will document that in the same condition. And is that, what was the third? Is that it? Two?
The third was, we had, and this is not something I put in the resolution, an internal discussion today with respect to the West Bristol Road sidewalk. And.
Okay, but that's it for the emergency access for that comment?
That's correct, but that's it for that. Yep.
And what was your last one?
So our last one was, we wanted to express to the board two things. Number one, that there was a partial waiver of preliminary from some curbing improvements on West Bristol Road. Otherwise, your subdivision ordinance does require full frontage improvements. Those full frontage improvements include sidewalk, and that was agreed to. Rob and I have since taken a look at the West Bristol Road frontage and what that looks like with respect to sidewalk. We are proposing, and not subject to this discussion, a sidewalk, what I'm going to call, to the right side, or the easterly side of the proposed driveway. That will connect to an existing sidewalk on Bristol Road that will take you into a neighborhood.
That's, that'll be Log College Drive.
Yeah.
Correct. So that's good. That works out really well. Then you have the connectivity to the neighborhoods, and that one makes a lot of sense. When you go to the other side of the driveway, to the west, I'm sure you're familiar with this stretch of Bristol Road, what we have is approximately, Rob, I'm going to guess, 500 feet of frontage on our property. Then you get to a point on Bristol Road where you're on a shoulder. And you have another, probably 500 feet, Rob told me, it's about 1,000 feet, to get to Meeting House Road. We're placing pedestrians in a place on Bristol Road where there's nowhere to go, effectively, right? You have the Nishamini Bridge, you have Meeting House Road on the other side, but of course, to do that, you need to cross Bristol Road at that point. At that point, at Meeting House, you need to go what's effectively a mile to get up Bristol Road in order for pedestrians to find some relief in the form of a sidewalk. So we're putting this out to the board. We think we've identified an issue. We're acknowledging we agreed to it at preliminary, but we're not sure that sidewalk is the best idea for anyone. We would be willing to do a full fee-in lieu, so it's not a cost issue for that installation of that sidewalk, because we don't really think it makes sense. So I wanted to put that out there for the board, for your consideration. The fee would be determined by your engineer's office, as they typically are, in terms, you know, just with a typical cost estimate. But that's our suggestion with respect to the frontage improvements.
Mr. Kenner, do you have any?
I do.
Okay.
I'm just trying to figure where I want to start. Which number, which number is this?
Number 20.
So originally, I don't disagree with anything that was just said. In fact, I think it's a safety issue I struggle with. And it happens more in rural townships where if you don't continue to build sidewalk, and everybody says, well, there's no sidewalk there, why should I extend it to the next property? And so typically, we try to put in sidewalk wherever we can to get people off the road. However, given the location of the Nishamini Creek, I did look exactly what she mentioned even well before this came to be an issue, because originally, it was not shown in the plans. At staff level and prior plan revisions years ago, submissions years ago, no one wanted to have sidewalk out there, except connected to Log College Development. So that was originally discussed, probably at planning commission back in the 2020 submission. I'm okay with that option if the board is. I think a fee-in lieu of those improvements is what we've done in the past and is in keeping with other projects. I do have concerns of it also getting washed away. They need to build a retaining wall, and just that whole area is constantly wet. It's right next to the creek. It's in the flood plain. I can't guarantee it will be built and be there five years from now, to be honest with you. And also, we cannot connect to any other sidewalk anywhere close by. So I'd be okay with that modification if the board is. If they like to have it constructed a certain way, as shown on the original plans, then that's fine as well. But it's still, you're just stopping sidewalk, and there's nowhere to go. There's no crosswalk. You can't do a mid-block crossing there across Bristol Road. That's not permitted. So they just would stop.
And there's no pedestrian walkway on that bridge, I believe, right?
No, there is not. I did look at that. So I'm fine with modifying that condition 20 if the board so chooses to do a fee-in lieu for that section only.
That's correct.
To make a motion?
Well, we're not done yet.
We don't need to do that. You just kind of, if anybody disagrees, then now it's time to speak up before Scott finalizes it.
I don't disagree with that.
All right.
Considering the, what I saw today.
Yeah, I agree.
I don't think it's, it'll last five years. It'll be washed away.
All right.
Okay.
We have one more?
Any other?
I think you're done, right?
Yeah, I'm finished for our comments on the resolution.
One item that was brought to my attention before the meeting, I'll turn it over to Mr. Hayes. I think he, if that's okay, sorry.
Sure, sure.
Taking control. Regarding the culvert across Bristol Road, that was previously discussed with the engineer a while ago, but maybe we need to revisit that issue.
Yeah, I had video and photographs that I tried to send for the laptop, but obviously, something happened. They were corrupt. So I, the visuals are in my head, but anybody that's been out there. So my question is, and I know this is, the culvert that goes under Bristol Road, it takes in a lot of water. You're going to repair or improve the culvert coming from Log College? Is that part of the plan?
That's correct.
Come on up, Rob. So you're, there's going to be improvements there?
Correct, because we have to tie into it with some of our drainage. So the pipe that runs along Bristol Road that discharges to that larger culvert needs to be modified. So, yeah.
Okay, so I think it's going under Bristol Road is, what, an 18-inch or a 24-inch culvert?
Uh, yeah.
Or corrugated pipe?
Yeah.
That looks like it's getting crushed.
Okay.
And then plus, my biggest concern is, you have drainage from Valley Road all the way down to that discharge. From Valley Road all the way down to that culvert that runs across and discharges in Nishamini Creek, I believe, you have, there's a lot of water coming down there. Today, there was. Now, I don't know, because there's a bridge there, so that doesn't make any sense. So let me correct that. So you have a drainage ditch coming from the west into that culvert that was taking.
Correct, and then there's the pipe.
Taking a lot of water, and then the pipe from Log College.
And then from our site.
And then from your site.
Correct.
Now, there was a lot of water moving in there today, and it hadn't rained for quite some time. Then I went over on the other side of the creek, and you're, what are you, about 40 feet away from the Nishamini Creek there?
Yeah, with a ditch.
Well, the creek was up today, and if it was up another foot and a half, that water would have been coming the other way, through the culvert into the site. Is there something that we can look at there to make improvements?
We can.
Is PennDOT going to look at that?
We'll have to have that discussion with PennDOT, because it's technically their drainage pipe.
I understand, but my concern is the residents that are going to move in there.
Yeah, no, I.
And you know, and I see where the 100-year storm demarcation is. But 100-year storms are fairly frequent now and common, and we've had some 500-year storms. And my concern is, which is why that road is important, and how much water that sits in that.
Yeah, and I don't, I mean, we're independent for review on our driveway. With that comes all the drainage review. If a pipe needs to be fixed or looked at, now's the time. We can do it while we're in that process, and we will gladly do that to make sure. Because again, if it needs to be replaced, and it needs to be replaced without our, without our project or with our project, we're going to have to have that discussion and figure out how that gets taken care of, but.
So what he just said would, basically what I said, would be the condition that you would at least contact and have PennDOT either investigate themselves, or you would look at it and determine if it's acceptable, or any upgrades or any change to that, because that is where you're tying in, and that'll be a choke. It's kind of silly to do improvements on your site, have extending of the other pipe, and then that be an issue.
Yeah, and I know one of the, one of the problems that we have in Warmminster, especially with stormwater, is that before, it was really understood what an issue it was. We're kind of choked because of all the PennDOT culverts or piping is all designed for 25-year storms.
If that, yes, correct.
Right. So if that's the same, that's going to be a problem. You know, if we don't, if we don't correct that, if that's a 25-year storm that's going to discharge water into the Nishamini Creek at a 25-year storm rate, or that's all the water it can handle, yet we have 100-year storms frequently now, then, I mean, so you'll get PennDOT to reevaluate that?
Yeah, and we'll get on the same page with Craig's office, you know, so that everybody understands what we'd be asked to do, or, you know, at least address it with them to see.
Okay. Because, because my concern is that we're going to have rescue people in there. And that's something I want to avoid.
It becomes a safety issue. If that's a choke point and backs up, that goes into your site, you have your new driveway, you have your own culvert that. you have your, your new driveway, you have your own culvert that, you know, again, if, if that corner gets flooded, they can't get out.
Yeah, no, I, I understand.
And actually, I would never guess that that was an 18-inch pipe there, because obviously, that's.
I, I think it's 24, but.
I, I think it's 24.
That's not designed for 100-year storm.
But it's not 36. I can guarantee that.
You need three or four 36-inch pipes to get that water.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We, we'll look at it.
Okay.
The, just to walk through the drainage in the area, though, our site actually sits higher than the township's site further along Bristol Road. So all of that area that floods is from the Nishamini. Now, yes, correct, in a, in a big storm, it will back up. But there's, you know, it, it basically first floods the township's property and then along our frontage. So, but I understand your point. Like, we'll, we'll look at it and we'll get PennDOT.
Yeah, I just want to be sure that when we do have major storms, that when the creek starts to come down, that drains quickly, or, or it can handle whatever.
Yeah, or, or it's an improvement.
But great, exactly.
If it doesn't flood, or, yeah, correct. So we're on the same page.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. At this time.
That's the only question I had.
Yep.
Is, do you have any more?
No, I'm.
Scott?
I'm not having more, so board, if you have any additional questions?
Any more? Okay. May I have a motion?
We'll do that. Now, now, anyone who wants a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the proposal in front of us.
Second?
I second that.
And any more questions or anything for, any comments from anyone here?
That's with the conditions.
I was just, thank you.
Yes.
Yes, with the conditions.
With the conditions discussed tonight and modifications.
We are motioning to include the conditions that were listed by Craig Kenner from Gilmore and Associates. Thank you.
There is a question?
Bobby, you have a question?
I just have one.
Okay.
Is it going to be a homeowner's association, or will I be billing them for trash?
Homeowner Association.
Homeowner.
Thank you.
Is he smiling now? Anyone else? Anything else?
Who was the second?
Chuck.
Chuck.
Or Janice.
Janice motioned.
Janice made the motion.
Chuck seconded.
And I said with conditions.
And Judy said with conditions, and I said, yes, with conditions.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion, Chair votes aye, motion passes 5-0. Thank you.
I'm looking forward to seeing it completed.
Board members, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
You're out. You don't, I took your job for you.
Okay, at this time, we're going to go to the consent agenda. First on the consent agenda is to consider the approval of the board supervisor's minutes dated January 15th, 2024, and the board supervisor's minutes dated February 1st, 2024. May I have a motion?
Just read them all, a motion.
That's January 18.
No, 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 you read them, yes, you read them all, but you read them all at once.
Read them all at once.
I asked you.
That's not what I thought you asked.
Okay, read them all.
Yes, and then.
Okay.
There's confusion with what was asked.
That's the way we normally do, we read the whole consent agenda and then a motion.
I asked them that.
It's okay.
Stop! Stop, stop, stop!
Next week, we'll change it. Next month, we'll change it, so you're confused again.
Yeah, okay, all right. So, all right. Consider approval of, of, of the board supervisor's minutes dated February 1st, 2024. Consider approval of investment policy statements for Warmminster Township non-uniform pension, Warmminster Township police pension, and Warmminster Township OPEB investment policy. Recommendation of award of the Bucks County Consortium Stone and Materials bid. E, consider, I should have been saying that all along, guys. Okay, E, consider award of the Warmminster Township 2024 curb ramp installation contract to NJS Concrete LLC in amount of $292,633. For all items under the base bid and alternate ones, subject to verification that their firm meets the requirement of the responsible contractor's ordinance, ordinance number 729, 729, as amended by ordinance number 767. F, consider award of the Warmminster Township 2024 paving program to James D. Morrissey Incorporated in amount of $1,019,391.24 for all items under the base bid, subject to verification. Responsible bidder is not responsible in accordance with the RCO award the contract to the next lowest responsive bidder until an award can be made, subject to verification that their firm meets the requirements of the RCO. Okay, G, consider 700 York Road Tesla, release number two from the escrow account in amount of $106,000. H, consider 911 York Road Lot 1 Assisted Living, release number five, final from the escrow account in amount of $193,382.55.
So move now, Chair.
Second.
Second. Are we supposed to discuss each other?
Questions or comments?
No, just questions or comments for the public.
Oh, okay. Any questions from the public at this time? Tom, did you want to discuss any of these items?
I did not.
You did not?
So if I may, Madam Chair, NJS has done the concrete, the handicap sidewalks for the last three or four years.
Since 2021, yes.
Morrissey, again, we got the bid out early, so that bid's probably half of what it would be if it went out now for the paving, and that's about it.
So I, anybody have any other comments or?
I, I have a comment. I, I noticed on the award for the installation contract of the concrete was the amount of $292,633. Now, that particular number was under the amount that we thought it was going to be. And the award for Morrissey in the million, in the amount of $1,019,391.24 was a little bit over, so between the two, we are under budget by $38,000. Yes. I just wanted to point that out.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I could change those estimates to be really high, and then we'll always be under from now on. While you're, Madam Chair.
That's not what we did. Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes 5-0. All right, we're on to the finance report. Finance report. Approval of the bill list, and we will go to Mr. Chuck Haboff. Chuck, you're on.
Yes, I am. How you doing? Approval of the bill list dated February 15th, 2024 in the amount of $1,110,344.53. Approval of a submittal bill listed February 2024 in the amount of $662,199.60.
Thank you very much, Chuck. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Chair votes aye, motion passes 5-0. All right, moving along to the January 2024 financial statement. John Ramey, you're up.
I'm over here that's.
There he is, that's right.
I'm filling in for Jill, so.
Okay.
Um, we're only through January, so this is going to be really quick, because it's only one month. But things are actually looking good again. Revenues are up. The thing about the January revenues for this year, there's going to be accruals, so some of that money's going to actually get put back to last year. But revenues are up, expenses are up, pretty much as expected. The way I like to look at it, especially on the, the beginning of the year, is revenues compared to budget were at 4%. Expenses compared to budget were at 4%. That's exactly where we were last year. So we're following the trend as last year, and if that keeps going, we're in a great spot going through. The main thing, looking at revenues, and I, I know we keep talking about this, but this is like one of the first months we really see it in the financials, is the interest income. Last year in January, we made $671 in the general fund in interest income. This year, we made $10,757.
Oh, my gosh.
So it was just literally taking the money from one checking account, putting it on a money market, and start actually earning money off of it. So in the long run, hopefully, between the Parks and Rec having money in there, the debt service, all the other funds, they're going to be able to pay for a lot of the things that they're looking at doing. I think one of the big ones was like the Warner Park lighting. The Parks and Rec has a million dollars in there. They're, they're making like $5,000 a month. Well, that's going to be half the cost of redoing that lighting, just from making it an interest this year.
Wow.
Hopefully, the Fed keeps the rates the same, and we keep raking in the money.
I agree. We all would like that. John, you always give us such great news.
Yes.
In the past, nobody wanted to hear about the finances.
I will be seconded the time that it's not good news.
Thank you.
Well done again, John.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. Moving along, we're on to professional reports.
No.
Sorry, I missed one. Oh, yes, we have to talk about, this is very important. New business revision to responsible contractors' ordinance. Tom, you're up.
Thank you, Madam Chair, ladies and gentlemen of the board. The responsible contractor's ordinance sets the limit for the requirement, sets the monetary limit for the price of the job that requires the successful bidder to demonstrate with the requirements of the ordinance. I know I just said, it sounds like I said the same sentence three times. So it requires some, some apprentice training for the people that are actually doing the work, some OSHA training for the people that are actually doing the work. In the original ordinance that was amended a couple of years ago, that amendment included an escalator that would increase the minimum amount of the bid based on the Philadelphia area cost of living, which, that's not the correct term, but the Consumer Price Index is the correct term. Thank you. And.
Locally known as cost-of-living changes, yes.
Yes, but the, the CPI has gone up quicker than anybody anticipated over the last few years, so we are working with the Township Solicitors Office to put together an amendment that fixes the number at a certain point. So the minimum requir, the, the minimum bid, for instance, we just saw JD Morrissey had submitted a bid for a million dollars and plus for the, for the, for the street repaving program. So it'll be a fixed number instead of a fixed number plus each year's Consumer Price Index increase. So we're working on what that number should be, because it's got to be around for a couple of years.
Right.
At least. We're also working on another part of the ordinance to amend it to include some, some of the equipment that would be used by the contractors as to the, the terms of the ordinance applying to how those parts are manufactured. And fabricated, I should say. So we, we hope to have the, the draft for the board's consideration and doing the advertising for the ordinance or whatnot prior to the next meeting, which I'm going to ask the board to set later on in this meeting, at April 4th of 2024. We also have other ordinances that are in the works that the Township's administration has been working with various departments on. So we're going to have a few ordinance amendments this year for you. That's all I have. Now Scott will correct me.
No, actually, I'm not.
I think I said it correctly about.
I'll correct whatever.
Can we have an amendment here?
We do, but we have not advert, we have not advertised.
Oh, okay. No, we haven't. It's just something you're going to start looking at.
Yeah.
So we haven't. We haven't finalized it yet, and so I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I don't know, not correct is not the word. I'm going to add a couple of things and maybe a little bit explanation of, from the beginning of that sentence, you said the same thing three times. So, uh, under state law, you know, the purpose of the responsible contractor's ordinance is to determine what is a responsible contractor. Under state law, we can only give contracts to the lowest responsible bidder. There's no state law, no court decision, nothing along those lines, regulations that determines what responsible means. So municipalities, and the state itself has actually done this too, have adopted these. They're known as different things in regards to municipalities, and were known as responsible contractor ordinances. It basically just sets the terms of, here's what a responsible contractor is, to know that when you bid out projects, the work you get, the product you get, that the town gets itself, all the people, is going to be something that A, lasts, is done correctly, and, you know, those are the two things we can say. You know, we had a little issue, you know, some issues with the lights that were done at Monroe Park, where it was a lower-level project that it wasn't done in the responsible contractor ordinance. So that's what you see the difference of sometimes, so. So that's what we're doing there. The only other thing I would add is, also included in the amendments is, there's going to be some stuff to help with the administration of it, of make it a little bit easier on my office, Craig's office in reviewing these, as well as the township manager once we get to the end. There's not going to be a lot of changes with regards to the qualifications. Those are pretty set. They're pretty well established throughout ours. I mean, ours is looked at as a very good one throughout the Commonwealth. So those don't need changes, but maybe the administration to help the things that we've noticed, those changes will come to as well.
Thank you, Scott. Craig, you're up for engineer's report.
No, that's all I had, I guess.
He said.
Tom didn't have anything?
Tom, he didn't.
Tom did it when I, when he did this, so he kind of incorporated it.
Okay.
Right, Tom?
Very good.
I would add, if I could, if it's, if it's not too late.
I'll yield my time.
It's never too late, Tom.
Thanks.
Go ahead.
Mr. Hayes had indicated earlier, Madam Chair, about the Public Works. I also think it's appropriate for us to thank WMA, because in two of the three storms that we had, they were instrumental in, in giving an assist and providing peace of mind for, for our, for our Public Works team in those, in those storms.
Thanks, Tom. I think we all, we all agree that we really appreciate WMA's help with that snowstorm. Public Works needed some help, and they were there at the ready, so thank you. Anything else, Tom?
That's it. Thank you very much.
Okay, Craig?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just going to update you on a couple, a couple, a lot of the township projects. Mr. Scott's kept us busy here the last couple of months, so we're continuing to work on the Shandora Woods. Right now, we're trying to work, biggest issue is how to handle, and I discussed this before, whether we remove the remaining stone, foundation, parts of the foundation, if we cap it, what we can and can't do per DEP. So I have our environmental staff, geo staff, working, trying to get some answers before we design that. And obviously, I'll update you guys and get, you'll be part of that, but we're trying to see where options are with the soil there, what we can and can't do. So the playground design, Jess and, and our staff under your planner, Judy Stern-Goldstein, they'll continue to work on that, but right now, we're trying to figure out what to do with the soil and the remaining stones, and how we can handle that. Warner Pike, Warner Park Lighting, again, at the end of February, there's, we're still waiting to get design evaluations from PICO, whether or not, and I think you already been updated that there may be an issue with PICO in the supply there, but the update as of a week ago was they're still working with, with PICO on that. Public Works actually have good news. I don't even know if Mr. Scott knows this, but we got a notification today that there should be a permit from LNI for the fuel tanks. We'll get, you'll be getting a, hopefully, a virtual permit approval by the end of next week and a physical copy of that.
In this case, LNI means the PA Labor and Industry Department.
Yes, so you needed a state permit for that, so we made a little bit of progress. We, the contractor did get an update from the state on that, so that's good news. We also started working, and Mike Walsh is doing a great job taking the lead with my office along with Barry Isit on the code enforcement, and the rest, and Scott and Tom want updating your ordinances. We'll focus on the zoning ordinance right now. We'll continue to work through zoning and also some updates to the subdivision and development ordinance. You'll probably see that probably over the summer. Road program, you guys approved tonight. I think that went great. And then one other project that really hasn't been discussed, you, you saw Jess do a presentation, and you awarded a bid for the playground, playground equipment at the WCP Park. We are working on that design, the grading, ENS controls, and working with Jess and her staff on that as well. So there's, that's kind of under your general, there's no specific project, but you've already seen that presentation with Jeff, so Jess, and we're working on the engineering part of that right now, so. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
I, I.
Sure.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Ladies and gentlemen, you may have seen this in the parking lot email blast from the other day, that the old playground equipment at the Hollowell Pavilion has been removed. So until the, the new ones, the new equipment is installed completely, we, we don't want anybody going into there, so it's got, it's fenced off with, I think with orange fencing. So please be patient until it's, it's, the new equipment is completely installed. We, we don't want anybody in there. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Tom. Okay.
One question. Go ahead.
Mr. Kenner? I get several calls about RVs, and would like to know what that's going to, any progress with that?
Or Craig. RV, RV. Call me Ken. Kenner. I don't have any.
He called him Ken.
Somehow I get that a lot. I don't have any update, other than the last point was stuck with issues with the internal, with the building and LNI. It's, it's on their end, the contractor's end, and, and some issues with the building, so I don't have any new update. I think it's been like that for a while.
Contractor's moving very, very slowly. They're, they're actually working in the building, but.
There was an issue with the, the, the power and the electric, so that was the last update I got, and that was probably the same.
I don't know why. I don't know why. I mean, you know, I deal with everything outside the building, so unfortunately, I don't get the details.
I was just curious because people keep asking.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I, you know, I'll try next meeting just to talk to LNI before I come and see if anybody knows anything. But really, if there's no progress, then, you know, this is what happens on my end and LNI's end. We don't do inspections until they start working again. So.
Just one question, Mr. Kenner. How we, are we starting to have a look at the spillway and preserving the T-box yet?
I actually did skip the golf course.
You did?
I'm sorry about that.
That's okay.
We have, I don't know how I did. We're working on the clubhouse with the architect. In fact, we're kind of behind the scenes right now with the architect's taking legal in your clubhouse, kind of proposal, working through budget numbers. I'm sure that'll be presented at some point to you. We'll basically be doing survey work and supporting the architect and, you know, giving them numbers as needed on the cost estimates for expansion of the clubhouse. What we're focused on now, and we just had a meeting last week, and I, at some point, we'll do a presentation with you. I think the golf course staff, Mike and his staff will come and present, and Aaron and myself will be with, and probably my structural engineer will be with, with them. We're looking, we just had a meeting last week with the bridges, several of the bridges out at the golf course, replacing those. We have a preliminary concept. They decided to move one of the bridges now just because it was a safety issue where we had it designed. We, we did some pathways and working on spillway design for the ponds, culverts for overall, over closer to when you enter the golf course, there's a pond, which really isn't part of the, of the golf course as far as the layout. Having that improved along with a new bridge over there, regrading the low line area there to basically feather it out, make it look nicer, a little safer for the golfers. So, and I'm probably missing something. But we have quite a bit of work that we've been working on. Concept wise, we have plans put together. Once the concept plans are okayed by the staff, then I believe, again, we'll be in front of you with, with Mike O'Tara and his staff to present what we're going to be doing.
Can't wait.
Great, thank you.
I'm sorry about that. It was a big one.
No, that's okay. I just was curious because I know we had spoken about it a few times and, you know, we don't want to see, it's such a nice course. We want to make sure it stays that way.
What Mike's staff, Mike O'Tara's staff has done is they're putting a whole wish list together. So that's what I'm presenting with pictures of what we're going to do, layouts. We're not really doing any engineering yet. And then it's going to come down to budget and with, with the board and wants to see out there along with Mike and his staff what we can prioritize. And we'll probably just phase the project in over the next few years.
Thank you.
Thanks, Craig.
Okay. Township manager, announcement of upcoming agenda items.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, ladies and gentlemen of the board, in addition to a presentation in the near future with regards to improvements at Five Ponds, we're also going to, we'll probably do this next month, here from Peter Layu, the Director of Library Services. They have been working on a long range plan and to give the board an update on the, the bathroom project at the library. So we're probably going to have Peter here in April. I'm meeting with him next, next week to go over it. Additionally, I'm hoping in the next couple of months to have Emergency Management and Services Director and Fire Marshal Joe Veltin here. I think we can go over, we have a copy of his annual report and also get an update from him on how, how we're making out with our new, our new professional firefighters and just let the board and the public know where that stands.
That would be nice to hear, to hear how they're making out.
Thank you. Thank you very much. That's all I have. Thank you.
Tom, you said the next meeting will be on April the 4th.
Oh, yeah.
Is that correct?
So first things first, I would ask the board to consider canceling the March 21st meeting. I don't think we need one as the March meeting has been advertised. I don't think we need another meeting this month.
No objections from me.
No objection.
Thank you.
And that would leave us with Monday, April the 4th. Excuse me, Thursday, April the 4th.
We knew what you meant.
As our next meeting.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you, Tom. Public comment.
Good evening. My name is Sean Cosenza. I graduated from Penn State University with a degree in community development and planning. I worked with the State College Borough Department in a planning project. I volunteered with Horsham Township Administration for a year where I met a good friend of mine, Mark Hudson, under whose advice it was that I'd be here tonight. In first grade, I went to McDonald Elementary. I also went to Leary Elementary, lived at both Rosewoods, and then spent the rest of my youth in Horsham. I just recently moved back to Warmester. I live in a duplex residence on the corner of Evergreen and Calmia Street. When I moved in, the gutters were clogged, algae was on the sidewalk, the basement was subjected to constant flooding, water remaining stagnant was coming and going in and out of the basement due to the amount of mud, muck, and grime that went along the full perimeter of the French drain. The concrete center blocks are decaying, have holes and cracks in them, have mold growth, visible yellow and black stained fungus with little hairs and spores along the walls. Paint cannot stay on the wet wall. Smell was permeating from the stone and filling the house. There is also visible growth in fungus in the basement, ceiling rafters. The place was simply neglected. It had just failed a rental inspection, 12-6-2023, due to there not being a sun pump for this property. It says very specifically right here outlined in the violation for it to drain to the exterior of the building. This just goes to show that a need for a sun pump installation to be required for an inspection as opposed by the township. It makes sense considering the noticeable water damage. Somehow the property has a past inspection dated 12-15-23. When I moved in January 1st, 24, there was no sun pump yet installed. As a matter of fact, the landlord tried to install it all month through all hours of the morning and night during my tenancy and first month paying rent. I was so sidetracked with the constant smell of mustard mold breaking down my health, ruining every meal, movie, and what would otherwise be a peaceful moment at the home, that I did not go to the township to complain about its construction. I went on behalf of my twin five-year-old sons to see what I could do about moving into a live and active mice infestation, the fumes being pumped down our throats by the central air unit that had never been cleaned and was only recycling the same musty air in our house, the leak in our room that had water drainage three feet into their rug, the kids' room, from a window that when looked upon more closely had obvious signs of patchwork from a problem previously never fully fixed. It was raining from the basement rafters and onto the power unit in the basement during the most recent storm. With the windows open in the winter, we could not even have the heat on because of the central air being poisonous. By January 17th, it had already been 10 days. He did not do a thing to the window. I went to licensing and inspections to see how it could possibly be this bad of a disaster for us. Justin, the zoning officer, said he made a report of everything I had said that day in person and would come out the next day. It was at LNI where my father and I learned the township required a sun pump for this property. We told them he had still been working on it all month, and we raised awareness to the fact of him having a permit or not, and they looked into it and he did not have a permit. Justin, the zoning officer, said he would come out and use the implementation of putting a stop work order on the property as an excuse to get the foot in the door and inspect my other issues and areas of the property. Since then, I have only felt he has looked for every reason to not violate the property considering whose oversight this might or may not have been. When he came out the next day, he told me he was not looking at anything else besides the stop work order and got in as quickly as he could get out. His whole demeanor had changed. He told me a landlord could have flooding in a home in Warmester and be allowed to run it out as well as have visible mold and discoloration in the drywall if he wanted to. Add to that, I got a letter from a Michaela Talia at Barry Iset saying Justin's inspection that day was up to code. Justin wrote in his report, there was no mold or life-threatening issues, but didn't look at a, at a leak, didn't look at the mice droppings or mold, and here is a positive test dated yesterday of mold in the rafters in my basement. I am now in a fight for my financial life against the landlord who's not accepting my expenses for cleaning mold, mildew, sealing in the smell, mice species, and I'm subjected to the outcome of a court hearing next week that otherwise would have been avoided if this guy had followed code like on all rental inspections. Templates as seen here. There are areas for mice, areas for mice entryways, areas for mold, vines over 10 inches to be inspected. I had to pull out a vine from the French drain that infiltrated the foundation. I had spent more than a month running repairs, missed my work, dropped my master's program class, currently enrolled now, and I'm now fighting for my life at the mercy of a judge was there not another way.
That was impressive.
Okay. All right. Thank you for your comment. Pat?
Hi, Pat Boyle, 63 Tensentennial Station. I, I went out socializing again, and the property on the corner of Lily and Sweetbrier, everyone at the event came up to me about the fence that got put up is down.
Oh.
The wood on the windows has been broken off and the kids are getting into the building. I also learned from another person that I just met that in the summertime, all those piles of rocks and stuff hold water and it gets filled with mosquitoes. And it's, they said they can't go outside. And what can the township do to get the people to take care of this property is the question. Can you look at it again?
Me?
Well, have somebody.
I'm sorry.
Can the township?
Yeah, of course.
Okay, thank you.
I think I have trouble keeping them all straight in my head, but I think that we had, we had something pending in district court about that.
Okay, that was that big monstrosity house that had us like, they never finished it.
It burned down four years ago.
I recognize the address. I just don't recognize, I can't immediately recall where the timeline is.
I just got a, excuse me, I just got last weekend notice from Lisa when I talked about it, and she said that you have control of the property now and it's for sale.
It's been for sale.
It's been for sale.
It's been for sale by the owners, but it's not, they didn't sell it and they have been, it is now under the auspices of the township.
Oh, okay.
And the township has it for sale.
I don't think that's
That's what she said.
I think we have, I think we haven't taken the property yet. We have not, we definitely have not done that.
Oh, okay.
I think what she, I think perhaps what she was saying, and I don't have that in front of me either, is that there's a court, there's a citation pending in the district court.
No, I shouldn't.
And that the, if this is the one I'm thinking of, there, we're having, the district court is having a difficult time serving the requirement. We've been asking for them to set a date for hearing so that the person can be found guilty or not guilty. I believe that's the one.
Okay, well, that isn't how I understood it, so.
I think you're right.
Yeah, Tom, that's At any rate, the township is trying to do what they can to get hold of it.
I just wanted to give you guys a reminder.
Tom, excuse me, that's the one that I talked to you about that had the deer coming into the bottom of the house that we went over and boarded up.
That is the one we boarded up. All right. So then, I am thinking about the right one. That is in district court pending the scheduling of a hearing date. But they won't schedule a hearing date until they hear from
So they sent out the summons. It hasn't been returned. So they, they can't schedule, so it goes into what's called warrant status. Unfortunately, you know what a warrant is. It doesn't work that way with district court warrants, though. But until they respond, you know, we, we look through the rules and this is a problem, not just in Warmester, it's a problem everywhere. Until they file a response to that summons, it's in that warrant status and they haven't scheduled the hearing yet.
I see. Thank you, Scott. Okay. Supervisor's comments.
Anyone else?
Oh, one up, John.
I got a two up.
You gotta raise your hand like school. No, I'm only kidding.
John Prillo said a six seven before Joseph Favino. I just want to tell the board, I understand this guy's that comment in the back, but I'll just tell my side to what I see. First of all, I think that Warmester's popping back. I sold my property on York Road. It was what they say, a price you can't refuse. I've been watching the street for about four years now, and what's going on on York Road and the prices that are being sold are quite good. And it, it looks like we're, we're bringing in some nice businesses to, to, to add to, to it. I was talking to Ken today about LNI. I had the pleasure of going through that U and O situation. Again, it's probably the third time since I've been there. What happened was they came in, which was normal. They, we did the heater cert and all the other things, and then we had the electrical cert, and things had to get changed. Things changed over the last four years. The process that went down at the, at the end for the final inspection, all that was, was very normal. I had a very good conversation with the inspector again on the final inspection. He was very polite. He handled himself very well. I was very impressed with the way it was all done. He worked with me by phone and got the U and O that I needed to get to, to settlement. Also answered all the questions that was needed from the new buyer for additional permits and their U and O going, going forward. So everything worked out perfect. I think, you know, we, we were talking about what was happening in the past. They may be, Ken may be right with some of the comments about, you know, not, not paying attention to detail as to what needed to be done at certain properties and things like that. But this new group that we have did an outstanding job and I got handed to, to them. And the office, the girl in the office that I spoke to a number of times on the phone, was very polite, answered all my questions, got me the permits I needed. And I think that they did a good job, and I think it's headed in the right direction as far as I'm concerned. And I think that whatever choice you guys decided to make, I think it was a good one. Okay?
Thank you.
You know, because you, you need to hear that too from people outside. You know, you have bad things, you're going to hear the good things too. So I think the guys did a great job. So.
Thanks, Tom.
There you go.
We'd like to hear that. Thank you.
I guess we'll certainly check into people that complain as well or have a complaint.
I'm a 40-year resident of Olive Street, 500 block.
Hold on a second. Please say your name, please.
Is it my name, Maine something?
Yes, it does.
Chris Stein.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'm a resident on Olive Street for 40 years, the 500 block. The block that just had no parking put on our street on the north side. I want to know why.
Hold on a second there, Mr. Stein. I think those parking signs were put up a long time ago.
No, them parking signs were put up.
Hold on a sec, hold on a second, sir. Aren't you the guy that those signs were put up because the ordinance says it was long before I was sitting here?
It's long before any of yous was sitting here.
But the ordinance has a no parking sign or no parking on your side of the street, and those signs were probably taken down.
Then, I've been there for four years.
Excuse me, excuse me. Let me finish, please.
Them signs were never there.
Well, I'll disagree with that.
You have to disagree till the casper comes.
So hold on a second.
One moment, Ken. Excuse me, one second. Sir, if you'd like to talk, if you'd like to discuss this, that's fine, but please be, please be
The man's calling me a liar.
He's not, he's trying to explain, sir.
Speaking of, speaking of
Let him speak. Go ahead, Ken, tell him.
So we, we saw, we read the ordinance where, where those signs, and the police chief is right here to verify that, that wherever that, whenever that was done, there's no parking on your side of the street because people don't have a line of sight in and out of their driveways. And the reason those signs got put back up is because one of your neighbors couldn't see coming in and out of their driveway. So those signs were put up. Now, with that said, sir, aren't you the gentleman that called our public works director and threatened to take all the signs down and shove them up his rear end?
Yeah.
And then when he said, when he mentioned that that probably wasn't the smart thing to do, you said you were going to come over to the township and kill someone?
That's possible.
Okay. You, you know, that's terroristic threats, right?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, and that, well, hold on, let me finish, let me finish, because you're not done. Okay? Because you're, you seem to be an angry gentleman over parking signs.
Yeah.
Right. The signs that the ordinance has been there for years.
You had company come to your house. Where does your company park?
Where my company parks, there's no, there's no, not, no parking signs on my street. That's irrelevant to this conversation.
There was no parking signs on my street.
They, 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 they were taken down by someone.
Them signs have never been up in 40 years.
Chief, can you
When was the ordinance written?
When, when were those, when were those streets, chief? Please, can you tell us when those parkings, when that ordinance was set where that street had no parking on one side?
There was no parking. I'm not sure if it was parked by truck or parked by vehicle, but it was no parking on that side of the street back when I was a sector car from 1996 to 2002.
Okay.
And there was a sign there.
And then the street went under construction, signs came down. They were either ended a block. That street has a history of poor signage, and there is a standing legal ordinance that says there's no parking on your side of 500 block of Olive Street, and that there was no signs, and the township crews a car to post signs because they posted the ordinance.
All right, then who's lying? When I came to see you last week, did you not tell me the ordinance was passed in 2019?
It was
I told you.
Let him
This is this
This is revised in 2019.
You told me 2019. I talked to one of them says 2019. You told me 2019. The county law talks on the phone says 2019.
2019.
Our police chief, let me get this straight.
Our police chief has already discussed what the ordinance, when the ordinance was passed, when the signs-
You don't get up in the big book. The ordinance was 2019.
No, the last revised version of that ordinance was 2019. Other streets would have been added, things, a whole bunch of different things could have been done in the codified version is what they looked at.
Forty years, there was no signs on that street.
Not according to our police chief.
May I ask a question?
Are you calling him a liar?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, very good.
Okay.
Simmer down. May I ask a question, please?
Yeah, three minutes is up.
Enough, enough, sir. It's a public comment. There's no debate here. Public comment-
I'm not trying to debate. I just was going to ask a question. That's all I asked. May I ask a question, please?
Sure, ask a question.
I also live in Speedway, so what makes the north side of Olive Street different than the north side of the other streets? I'm just asking. I'm not trying to cause trouble.
That would be, that would be something that the police would have figured out a long time ago.
An act of body of order.
How long ago? Years ago, right? Right, exactly.
Is there, is there an ordinance for the 400 block of Olive Street?
No.
Which is the same identical situation. Residents on one side, commercial on the other.
But there's residents on both sides of 400 block of Olive Street.
There is?
Yes.
Where are they?
These three minutes are up.
Sorry, three minutes are up, sir.
Sure, my three minutes.
Thank you for your public comment.
I want to get the signs changed.
It's under our ordinance. We cannot, we cannot do that with the ordinance that's in place right now. We have to follow, our ordinances are like, are the laws, okay?
When you pass an ordinance, are the homeowners involved in this?
Our agenda is posted early every single month, and everything that we're going to be passing is on the agendas. Anybody can come to these meetings, and if they have something to say about whatever's happening, they can comment. But this was passed years ago, and we have to abide by the ordinances. So, thank you.
I got a notice when they built Burger King. I got a notice when they built Altoos.
This would have been many years ago, sir, as like the chief said.
Burger King's been there for how long?
That doesn't matter. It's like apples and oranges.
Well, it was years ago.
That was zoning. That was for zoning.
That's, that's-
Apples and oranges.
Right, that's why I said it. That's zoning with a business. All right, so public comment is over, but thank you for your comments. We appreciate it. Thank you. There's nothing to be done about, sir. We cannot break an ordinance. We'd be breaking the law. We have to follow the ordinances.
Well, I understand that, but we're making modifications to other ordinances. We just discussed that earlier. Is it possible that Mr. Kennard can revisit and see what the benefit is?
This was done by the police department years ago.
Well, it was done by, the board passed the ordinance based on people not being able to get in and out of their driveways because when people park on that side of the street, they don't have a good sightline to back out of their driveway. That's what I was trying to explain to you. That was done a long time ago, not here.
There's not a turn in the street.
Well-
It's a straight street.
It's a straight street.
If you're going down the middle of the street, a tractor trailer's been going down that street for years.
It's people coming in and out of their driveways, so it's-
I've been there for four years. Never had a cop.
All right, okay, well.
Okay, may I have a motion to adjourn? Excuse me, sir.
I have a petition here of seven of the 14 residents that live on that street that want it changed.
Very good.
There it is, right here.
You can give that to him, and he'll give it to our township manager. Thank you for your comment. We have a motion to adjourn, please.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
This is over, street signs.
Let's go.